Good morning. It is Tuesday, January 30th, 2024. We'll call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Next is time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you'd like to make public comment, please come forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing none, we'll close public comment number one and we'll move on to the proclamation recognizing February 2024 is Black History Month. And I'll ask both my colleagues to join me in reading part of the proclamation. I'll start off saying where as Black History Month, also known as African American History Month, is celebrated each February in the United States. And whereas this began in 1926 and was originally planned for one week to coincide with the birthdays of two important individuals in the fight to end slavery, Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln.
And whereas in 1876, it was expanded to encompass the entire month of February to recognize the significant contributions made by African Americans to our country's economy, politics, science, religion, and society as a whole. And whereas to preserve and protect the legacy of African Americans, a time should be set aside to focus on and reflect on the lifetime triumphs and achievements of great leaders, educators, scholars, inventors, politicians, writers, artists, and citizens. And whereas Story County continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world.
And whereas Story County is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month and encourage all citizens to recognize, celebrate, and expand their knowledge of the history, culture, legacy, struggles, and achievements of African Americans. I move the proclamation.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Proclamation is adopted. Did you want to? Later? Okay, that sounds fine. Next we'll move on to agency reports. We have Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report. Brett is here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everybody. All right. This report covers October the first through the end of the year. How's that? Oh, yeah.
That's better. Thank you.
I can hear it myself. Boy, this quarterly report is October 1st through December 31st. And we had one veteran come in. He came in a couple of times for utility assistance. That was 275, 35. And then we had one homeless veteran come in. It was like the Friday before Christmas needed some help with a motel stay. We took care of that for 358, 40 for a total of $633.75 for the entire quarter out of county funds. We had 300, a total of 302 that we interviewed that month, 258 men, 44 women, 32 World War II, 47 from that served during Korea, 113 that served during Vietnam, 32 Persian Gulf, 36 Cold War or peacetime, 19 who served in Iraq or Afghanistan, and 23 who were surviving spouses of veterans. And from time to time, we can find benefits for our surviving spouses. Our VA transportation's been going really well. During the last quarter, we've transported nine veterans from their homes to their VA medical appointments. Currently, we have, well, as of yesterday, we have seven drivers. This says we have six at the time of I wrote this, but we have a total of seven drivers. We're requiring a five-day notice for a ride. So when a veteran, you know, as soon as they get their appointment, give us a call if they do need a ride. And the Story County/ Brushy Creek Honor Flight is in full swing. Our next flight is May 22nd. And right now, that one's actually full. We're taking applications for the August 2024 flight. Outreach for the quarter in October is up in Story City and also did Maxwell for Hometown Outreach. November Slater and Colo. And then myself and two other agencies, we did a program at the USDA on VA benefits. Then I was Hometown Outreach in November in Roland. We did our supermarket in November also on the 17th. Had 112 that showed up to that one. I think the board members were there, so I thank you for stopping in. And also in November, we did Hometown Outreach right here in Nevada. And then I was invited to be the guest speaker at the Ames Kiwanis, December the 7th, which was actually Pearl Harbor Day, so that was kind of fun. Education for the Fall School County Veteran Service Officers. We had a school October 10th, 11th, and 12th. Aaron and I both attended that. And then there was a one-day school for our commissioners, Nick and Doug. Commissioner Nick and Doug both attended that one. We were at 51.15% as of the end of the year. So budget-wise, we're tracking pretty well.
Great. Great. Any questions for Brett?
I just have one question. Do you get any reports from other local providers, housing providers, as to how many veterans they're serving? Or are they tracking that information?
No, nothing on housing.
Okay. I was just wondering how many of our, how many of our veterans are getting homeless services through other agencies?
Right, yeah. I mean, we do have a program down in Des Moines that homeless can stay at the YMCA. They stay down there and then they help them, help them with resumes and job searching and that kind of thing. Also Mason City has housing up there that a veteran can stay up there for a couple of years, actually, in apartments. But I don't know, you know, I could look into that to see what kind of numbers they might have.
Information to have is locally, how many veterans are receiving services that we don't know about through what's available through the VA.
You know, it's kind of fun when I talk to other county directors, nobody has homeless in their county, you know? Just because they don't, they don't see them, but
Right.
Yeah, and I don't see a whole lot that come in the office just every once in a while. On this one that we did a motel for, he actually had a job starting January the 2nd. And he had a place to live on January the 2nd, and so this was right before Christmas. He just needed help with five days.
Well, good. I'm glad you were able to
Yeah, yep.
Provide him with assistance. Thanks, Brett.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Any other questions? No, thank you, Brett. Appreciate it. Now we'll move on to consideration of minutes.
I move approval of the January 23rd minutes.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Consideration of claims.
I move approval of claims as presented.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Consent agenda. Is there anyone pulling anything from consent agenda?
No.
I'd move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Hey, we have no public items. We're down to additional items. Discussion and consideration of Resolution 24-46, DNB Reynolds Agricultural Subdivision. Good morning, Marcus.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
Morning.
All right, so before you today is an agricultural subdivision for the Reynolds family. The purpose of this is to split off the existing dwelling on this, on these two parcels. It's going to go to a family member who's integral to the work of all the farmland that they own in the area. It's located just southwest of Maxwell. You see that on the map? So this is the current configuration. There's two parcels there. The house is in the smaller parcel in the southeast corner. So the house will be split off and you'll see that in the plat. The ag buildings will go on to another separate parcel and then the rest of the row crop land will be on its own as well. So the house will be that southeast corner of the smaller kind of section in the middle. There's a couple of easements there just for access back across with the ag subdivision. There is no new, we're not creating anything that's buildable. So these aren't for new dwellings or anything like that. It's just dividing up the ag land, usually in its case within family members, so. It meets all of our standards for agricultural subdivisions. And we sent out letters on January 23rd. There was no, nothing back about the proposed subdivision was received and there's no cities within two miles. With that, here's just some of the other principles to consider. Again, it meets all of our standards. No new development. And with that, Plank Development Staff recommends option one, which is approving it as proposed. Have any questions?
Any questions?
Map showed a whole lot of egg buildings.
Yeah.
Is there livestock as well as, I'm just curious, as well as row cropping?
There's any livestock on that property. I mean, I don't know for sure, but just based on what I know of the property, a lot of it is day row crop, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't any warehousing or anything like that going on. It was agricultural.
Right, it's all, it's all ag, so.
And it kind of, it kind of looks like there are two splits happening. Is that right?
So, and I talked with the property owners. They came in on Monday or Friday when they had, so this has been a long time coming. So this was initially platted in, the drawing was done in 2021. So it has taken a while to get everything together. And so when the surveyor did it, he just did the whole thing that the large LPs isn't changing boundaries at all. It's just being included within the whole just because it is. So that's how it currently sits and it's not changing in the
Okay.
The only thing that's actually changing is the smaller parcel is being split into two, just so that the house is separated from the rest of it for estate and family.
So Marcus, just for clarification, the new dwelling is going to go?
There's no new dwelling. The existing dwelling is in the southeast corner of the smaller parcel.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's there. There's just some trees around it and stuff, so.
Gotcha. Okay, okay.
So basically, they're just separating the house from the ag buildings and putting the ag buildings with the ag land.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
But whenever, again, with the agricultural, nothing new can be built unless, I mean, they can always build ag buildings agriculturally exempt, stuff like that, but no new dwellings can be built.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks for that clarification.
It says on the, on the map, machine shed subject to easement in note four.
Yeah, so that's just the snippet. The actual packet has the full subdivision, like the, it has all those notes on the bottom of the plat just so you could have detail up here, so.
Access and use of machine building instructed in 2018. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Is there a motion?
I'd move approval of Resolution 24-46, Agricultural Subdivision Plat, B and D Reynolds Agricultural Subdivision as put forth in the application.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Approved. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcus.
Next up is Animal Control's Quarterly Report. Good morning, Anna.
Good morning. We already commented that there's no kitties being brought or no dogs. All right, so the last quarter of 2023 brought us 101 animal intakes. We adopted out 103 animals and 10 animals were reunited with their owners. According to 2022 data, this was more in line with other years. 2022, we did have more. We had several dedicated volunteers who put in a total of 110.5 hours helping us to socialize animals, helping with our cat or day and Colo that we were doing, and deep cleaning and organization projects. 31 kittens and cats and four dogs spent time in foster care while they waited for their spay neuter surgeries or medical treatments. And animal control calls slowed down with 35 calls. We have a Meat and Cheese Palooza fundraiser being held for us by our friends with the Chase and Tales crew in March. And the planning for the annual memorial ride also put on by Chase and Tales is starting. And then a look at our 2023 stats. In 2023, we took in a total of 448 domestic animals. This was about 6.7% less than 2022, mainly due to not as many ownership releases. Intakes consisted mostly of stray animals. We also transferred in 31 animals from other agencies. 117 animals spent time in foster care. This was a 54% increase from last year. Our live release rate also increased to 96.7. We find our live release rate by taking our live outcomes and dividing it by total outcomes. Our average length of stay didn't change by much, however, reducing that number is always one of my top priorities. Any questions?
Any question?
No, no, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
Other reports. We have discussion and direction on amendment requests with the Story County Housing Trust ARPA agreement. Good morning, Leanne.
Good morning. I'm just going to give some opening comments for the next three agenda items and then you have the sub recipients representatives here to give the board an overview of the proposed modifications. And I'll be back in the back if you have any questions after they're done, but just, just some housekeeping items. As the board well knows, ARPA requests were due in October 2021. A number of changes have occurred as well as time since that point for the various sub recipients and the projects that were funded by the board. So the process, if a sub recipient wants to amend an ARPA agreement, is to come to the board under other reports. During that, they'll present the information and how they would like to modify the request. You give direction then to staff and the ways in which you would like to see an amendment to the agreement drafted that then goes to the sub recipients for them to take action on. And then staff brings it back forward to the board for approval. It's generally on consent because you've had this opportunity to discuss it, but if there are issues, by all means, we'd put on additional items. So just some background. With that, all three, the next three agenda items are for proposed changes to ARPA requests. Do you have any questions you want to ask me before I go back and open up the floor for the individual sub recipients?
You're looking for direction from us.
Direction, yep. Lucas is on for the first.
For the housing.
Yep.
Lucas, do you want to make comment? Thank you.
Good morning. Lucas Young here, representing the Story County Housing Trust. The request in front of you is to remove the requirement to have IFA as part of the First Time Homebuyer Program. Within the application, we specifically called out that we would partner with a lender that offered an IFA First Time Homebuyer Program that has proven to be difficult as we noted when we provided an update, I think, late last year. So we thought it would be prudent to request a change to remove that IFA requirement. Still offering those funds to first-time homebuyers, but now without the requirement that it be tied to an IFA program.
Questions?
I don't have any questions. I do just want to put out there that I sit on the Story County Housing Trust Board and that this is not going to make any changes to any of the income guidelines or anything else.
And just a quick reply of why IFA funds are so hard to access in Story County? I think I've heard this before, but I'm forgetting.
Yes, so the, we have tried to get additional lenders added to the roles at IFA as offering their programs. IFA is not interested and has been, I guess, problematic in, in work. It's been difficult working with them and problematic in the ability to adding more lenders in Story County and have blanket statements that they aren't adding any additional lenders, even though we've asked over, you know, a six-month period of time to add more lenders. They're not interested in adding more lenders.
And we have willing lenders?
Yes, there are willing lenders in Story County that we've had conversations with that would be on board, but IFA is not interested.
Well, I guess that then I think this, this proposal makes a lot of sense. Something we can do despite IFA being non-responsive.
I concur with that. Right, thank you, Lucas, for your input. Leanne, does that give you kind of a little direction with that? Okay, next we have Nevada Food at First Agreement. Would you want to come up and make comment?
Morning, Barb.
Morning, Barb. Morning.
The information's in your packet is what we prepared to present. The amount of cold storage, the funds for that was inadequate. And rather than, I appreciate that. My intention when I submitted it is I thought you'd stop at 15,000 and we would make up the rest from our donor sources, but instead you paid, we drew that down fully for that amount, but it was a simple inflation between October 2021 and when we purchased those. The other piece of the puzzle was to offer travel support for volunteers who were going into the northeast, southeast parts of eastern Story County so that anyone could participate in helping care for their neighbors. And when the state auditor was here in this building, gas, we, our intention was to offer some gas money, not pay mileage. And so gas cards were out of the question. So we are asking that that, those funds be applied to our personnel item and that's the funds needed to offset the 1.0 cold storage funds come from the food distribution supplies.
So am I correct? You're not asking for any additional funds just to transfer between, among line items in your original budget request?
Yes, please.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Exactly. We'll take care of the gas money another way.
Oh, super.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that either.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Barb. And then next we have Youth and Shelter Services ARPA Agreement.
Morning, Hope.
Morning.
Oh, you need to. There you go.
Woo. I'm Hope Matheny, Transitional Housing Program Director, and I submitted some program updates, amendments per requested. I think now that we have been running for a year, we have a better idea of where we need to put the funds and add funds. And the top part, as you see, is all staff salaries. As I'm looking this over, I would assume I need to come in every year to get an amendment on staff salaries as we are talking about cost of living raises or those kinds of incentives there, our incentives, salaries, competitive salaries. As we talk about that, one thing I asked Leanne about yesterday is I noticed that we don't have a line item for mileage in there. Staff spend significant amount of time helping youth get moved into places, taking them on tours, moving furniture from our overflow MOU or ordering and delivering it with the clients with them. So I'd like to add that in at the bottom part as well. I have also updated the rent subsidy part of it. And then there was probably a little bit in there that didn't make a lot of sense with the changes. So when estimating how much we'll spend on rent over the next year, I compared it to HUD Fair Market rents from 2022. And the average apartment, two-bedroom apartment has went up $90 per month, which is fair. For, I think, a one-bedroom one, it's went up $60 per month and just since October of 2022. So everything, as we see, the cost of living is going up and that affects my how much we'll spend on rents and deposits as we're trying to sign one-year leases for everybody, which at times has been a bit difficult working in Story County, not going on student schedules.
So Hope, one question I have
Yeah.
Is, are you looking at changing the amount that you're receiving?
No, adjusting it all and knowing that at times I'll continue to, it might, it's going to be a little bit less in salaries, but every year it's going to continue to increase a little bit more. But for this year, I had just rearranged the amount, changed percentages to better represent what is actually occurring.
Okay, yeah, I just asked because you do have a note, but note, this is previous was 270,000 per year, 15, a three-year, so that's where the confusion came in.
Oh, yes.
You've mentioned about putting in mileage.
Yes.
Where are you looking to put that in and what would it be taken away from? Because I don't see it line item.
Yeah, there isn't a line item there. I would say we would add that in at the bottom with, and make it its own line item.
Right, but where would you take? Right, but where would you take the funds? I mean, are you taking funds out of the budget somewhere like under other total expenses and taking some out of that line and putting in for mileage? I'm just trying to figure out.
I would probably take it from furniture because we have the MOU with overflow where or as needed, taking it from household supplies as well. Deep, if, that's another one that's heavier in the beginning. And then as we work with the youth, hopefully they're able to budget for their own household supplies, but it's just a lot of that initial helping them with toilet paper, that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Other questions?
Um, yeah, I, I have a couple. So it's so the, the title of one of the positions is different, correct? But that, there's an AVP Transitional Services and now it's VP of Programs.
Yeah.
That essentially the same person? Or same job, same?
So Toby O'Barry left the organization. Um, and they did a restructuring and so Reggie has um taken over as VP of Programs.
Okay. And the expectation is that Reggie will spend less time working on administering the program?
Yes, how ever um since I have submitted this, there has been a bit of a change within the organization and I am transitioning from Transitional Housing Program Director to Major Grants Director. So I plan on taking more of an administrative role in this grant um and overseeing it since I already have the background as compare, and then we're hiring a new program director who will assist more with the day to day responsibilities.
So will you be adding a, a person then to the program? It just gets really, it gets really confusing trying to understand how roles are assigned and then how percentages are assigned and like the Transitional Housing Program Manager is still at fifty thousand but with twenty percent time dedicated to the program. And then there's a note that this includes a three percent raise. But then it wouldn't be fifty thousand annually.
That was already from the previous one. They were at a different amount and now it's been up to fifty thousand with change over transition of staff, salaries have been a little bit catching up since positions have been open at times.
Okay, cause the original, your original application said fifty thousand dollars for one FTE for the Transitional Housing Program Manager. And that stayed the same in this new amendment. But the percentage of time the person is going to be dedicated, dedicating went from fifteen percent to twenty percent. And a three percent. The note says there's a three percent rate, so I'm just confused.
I would, I would assume, yes, that we're going to probably put in the three percent raise on July one.
Okay.
That staff is not currently at fifty thousand and that's where they should be at July one.
Okay. Okay, um. And the Rapid Rehousing Youth Advocate.
Yes.
Is going from thirty five thousand to forty one thousand six hundred.
Yes.
That, that's not just a three percent increase. That's an increase, does that include a three percent raise?
That is in the process of being updated with market adjustments. Um, so they would go to twenty dollars per hour is what that salary is.
And then the Transitional Housing Program Director, which is what you are now. Is increasing time dedicated to the program by twenty five percent. And an increase in the, the line item.
Correct.
Increases by seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty per year from the original contract. Is that going to continue to be you or is that going to be this?
It will be the new person and uh it needs to be an up dedication of time. As you have seen, um, it's been hard to house, so more time does need to be dedicated to spending down lease funds. So yes, I would say the director um will be spending more time in the program.
And what does the, what, what is that housing, the Transitional Housing Program Manager and advocate doing that's different than the director?
So the advocate does all the one-on-one care um meetings. The manager is more the coordinator for the program, uh is a structured supervisor to that we have monthly meetings where we do case consults and those kinds of mid-level ten thousand feet stuff. And the program director is going to have the whole integrity of the program and not just uh this ARPA program, but oversee other funds as well. Um, so there's a more variety of programs in there. It's in Story County. It will be a few different rapid rehousing programs. So a lot of their time will be dippyed up between programming.
Okay, so I guess that's part of where my confusion comes in. It seems like that the groundwork, the work, work
Mm-hmm.
for the program is being done by the advocate and the program manager. And so that's where I would expect to see more if there's a request for an increase in salary that, that's where I would expect to see more of an increase.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm just a little confused about all of the moving and who's who's, you know, going to be where? And I, and I'm not sure I understand what Reggie's role would be um in this.
He, yes, so as the VP of Programs, he oversee, it will be overseeing all um twenty-four hour and more type residential type programs. I think he'll be more involved at the state level um of incorporating, making sure that uh we're using best practices of trauma-informed care, harm reduction, um advocating at the state level for homelessness awareness, those kinds of things.
How long have you had this money? Remind me. When did we award this?
I think it was October of twenty twenty two.
And you, oh, you've been talking about, we will, we will, we will. Have you not really implemented this program yet?
We have, we have people housed.
You do, okay.
Yes.
That was my concern, because I didn't hear that. I heard you saying, we will be doing this.
Oh, sorry, we are.
You are doing it.
We are doing this. There are currently people housed and we have now celebrated over a year of being active and our first discharges um just happened in January. Um, and they were able to continue to live in their apartment. Um, one is enrolled in college and is working part-time, so it's actually a very rewarding time. Now, because we have been going for over a year and we're starting to see the positive outcomes.
Glad to hear that. Thank you.
Question I do have, and Latifah, you might have the answer for me, because I don't have it in front of me, but the VP of Programs, is that in our, in their original?
AVP Transitional Services.
Yeah.
In the original. And that was um Toby.
Okay.
And so now it's VP of.
So I, I, it looks like about one point five five FTEs total in this revision. Is that what they had originally? A twenty percent, a twenty-five percent, a ten percent.
One, one at fifteen percent, one at eighteen percent, one at twenty percent and one at a hundred percent.
Eighteen, twenty and a hundred.
Yeah.
Okay. That was one, that's one point five three, so they're same.
There's one at ten here, so you said eighteen?
So the one at ten was the AVP of Transitional Services and that one went from twenty percent to ten percent. So that was, that was a reduction of sixty four hundred dollars annually.
Okay.
In the budget.
But there was a Transitional Housing Program Director prior?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
And, and Latifah, the numbers you read out come to one point five three and the numbers in their revision come to one point five oh, so it's not asking anymore total time.
It's not, no, it's not, no, no, the.
It's just the internal reorg.
Right, and, and overall, it's an increase of ten thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Not in the total ask. But just in the annual budget. And so I just wanted to touch on the fact that I, I, I'm confused by the fact that it's heavier on the top and not on the bottom where I feel like and, you know, where it just seems like it would make more sense. And
we did not spend two hundred and seventy thousand last year on all of the program, so it is heavier this year. Um, because I'm trying to make up for that and we have raised how many units we would be housing. Originally, we had said ten and now in order to fill our grant requirements, we are raising it to twelve. Um, however, I had lowered the amount then at twelve, it would have been a hundred and thirty eight thousand in rental assistance per year, but we don't have ten, twelve housed today. So I'm trying to put in more realistic estimates for the year instead of saying yes, a hundred and thirty eight thousand, but staff are all hired, so I would estimate that would hopefully, without turnover, stay the same.
So now I'm a little confused. So you don't have people housed?
We do.
Okay, I was just a little confused by what you said of doing ten to twelve, but it didn't sound like you had folks housed.
We have both housed, however, with discharges, I think we're sitting at seven in home today and five that are working with the advocate to sign a lease.
Okay, okay, so some had been homed.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
We've done some discharges. Now we've taken some more clients and working with them to get housed.
Thank you. Questions?
Um, I think so. Hold on just a second. So just to go back to note number four for Transitional Housing Program Director, the note says uptook on additional responsibilities. Can you, can you tell us what they are, the additional responsibilities? Or give us an idea of what they are?
The additional responsibilities for Transitional Housing?
The, the note, well, the note says justifying the increase.
Mm-hmm.
Uptook on additional responsibilities. That's what the note says.
Yes, with the program of doing uh some of the things that are needed to do, uh going and doing landlord engagement activities, those kinds of things to make sure we can get uh youth housed. Being a part of the Community Partners Housing Board, those kinds of activities to make sure we're going at a, not just a YSS um level, but a whole community level of making sure we're involved in partner meetings.
So those additional duties were not originally envisioned?
Some of those have been and some of them have not been.
Okay. And you decided those duties were not within the original classification or the original salary levels, so you needed to increase the salary to compensate for those?
Yeah, with market adjustments and everything else, yes.
Okay. Leanne, can I ask you? Do you, does, does this give you all the information you feel is necessary? Do you have any other questions? Cause this is a little confusing to me. I want to make sure that you're feeling comfortable with this document.
Um, yes and no. I have more questions from today. Um, Hope, you mentioned that you're transitioning to another position, but that's not reflected on here. Yet you would be, so do you have additional information to provide in that regard?
I just accepted it and I have not transitioned yet. I would assume it would be more like how you are transitioning. It's going to be over a length of time. I'm still within the agency. And so there's going to be crossover and training and getting people up to date.
Okay. Um, let me ask this, will your new position be tied to the Harp, ARPA program as well? So there'll be essentially rather than just four positions, there'll be five positions that would be listed within the.
No, I think it's going to stay at four, for time management. However, I think I will probably be in place of AVP of Transitional Services more since I already know the program so well. Um, as compared to try, trying to train Reggie as much in a program that's already going.
I guess my question again is, do you need further budget clarification from Hope? And have this come back to us maybe next week and you can converse?
Yeah.
It just seems like there's a lot of questions here and um
Sure.
Looks like you may be needing a little bit more detail.
I do. I, I think it would be um if possible, some direction from the board as to whether or not you would entertain increases to salary and that aspect. Um, rather than in lowering the other amounts, I mean, the give and take to increase salaries and lowering the bottom half of the proposal. And then Hope's question regarding mileage as well, whether or not you'd entertain us having a discussion to build that into the proposal or the, you know, proposed project as well.
And I, I think that the mileage question is probably something that needs to go get run by the state auditor after our mileage.
Yes.
Question that was raised with food at first.
That's a very good point, too.
I also had a question too. I think Hope mentioned with the VP of Programs, um, looks more on that higher level, state level, kind of advocating on things. Just want to make sure that it's not kind of lobbying, using ARPA dollars for lobbying.
Okay.
Um, because I don't believe it can be used that way. So I just want some clarification as with that particular role or if it's changing. And instead of the title VP of Programs, if it's going to be you staying on in that percentage, then I'd like to see the notation of that particular role.
It might be helpful to have job descriptions that I can share those with the state auditor's office too.
Okay.
So we can get their opinion on that. That's a good thought.
So I guess our direction is for you two to work together and get Leanne's questions answered and bring it back for further direction.
Okay.
That helped, Leanne. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Hope.
Thank you.
Leanne, I think you just stay on up here.
Okay.
Are you telling her not to run away?
Yeah.
Okay, um, this next item is follow-up to the work session that we had earlier in Jan, earlier in January. Regarding the drawdown status of the various ARPA sub recipients, um, at that meeting, it was um. Suggested staff return on a bi-weekly basis to provide an update, and that's simply what this is. Um, so the first page of the materials that were on the agenda is the overall snapshot. And as projects get completed, um, financially, we'll put them in red, I do want to note. Under project status, um, there's completed less than fifty percent, completed, completed more than fifty percent. Those are the categories that we report to the, the treasure, uh, the US Treasury, so that's. I may remove that or add a footnote for explanatory text, so we may have a project that is. Completed, uh, or completed less than fifty percent, like number eleven, Heartland Senior Services. But they've already drawn down all the funds, does that make sense?
Oh, you mean their total project is not done, but they've used all their ARPA funds, so they're not open yet?
Right.
Okay, I wondered, that makes sense.
And maybe you're going to get into this, what do you mean by the percentage of total funding, actual, projected? I, I get that, but I don't see like a percentage of how much they've. Like of their, I'm just looking at whistle stop, like of that two hundred and fifty thousand, how much have they actually drawn down, what percentage?
Thirty-eight percent, that's the actual?
It is, the thirty-eight percent is the actual, okay.
And then if you'll recall, early, or November, December last year, we asked the sub recipients to give some projections. On a monthly basis where they would be drawn down, and that's what that projected amount is.
Okay, okay.
So just a, a way to compare actual versus where they anticipated, so we can see if there's any red flags or in areas that we need to drill down in. Deeper.
Gotcha, thanks for that clarification.
Um, so the second page, and yeah, and as I need to modify this, let me know, this is the first time we've all kind of worked through this. Um, and so if you need additional information or change the way I present it, I'll be glad to do that. Um, the first table on the second page, those are just those projects that have drawn down all their funds, so. Completed from the funding standpoint. The next table, which starts with the Boys and Girls Club through MIPA, there are eight of those sub recipients. Um, those are our sub recipients that from a funding standpoint are on time, they've either drawn down the amount to which they expected to be. Um, or they're greater than that, equal to or greater than. And then the last page, um, these are projects that are not meeting their projected drawdowns. Um, this was as of last Thursday that I did this, so this will not reflect any claims that were submitted this week. And that's why these numbers will continually be changing, obviously. Um, seventeen of our sub recipients are not meeting the anticipated drawdowns. I do want to know broadband is not included in here, nor is the um, Colo-Nesco Childcare Facility. The City of Ames Pool, which I have a claim sitting for them. And the City of Nevada, as the contract was just signed with you today. Um, the broadband is kind of a different entity, we know where they are and they're depending on NOFA spending, spending. Do you have any questions?
So a couple of those are pretty close, like thirty-eight versus forty-two percent, forty-two versus forty-five. There's some that are just, and I assume Housing Trust will be more because of the change we made today.
Um, the Housing Trust too, and they've purchased the two homes for Iowa houses too. So we, that, that one I know will go quickly, um, yeah, I can go down the list and tell you, I know, like City of Story City. Um, they're just waiting for all the final receipts to come in, and that will be a one, one-shot drawdown. Same with Child Surf, number forty-three. I, I don't know if they've let the project out or not, if it had gone to bid, but they anticipate this fall. I think it's this fall they'll be drawn down. But then there are some that we may have some, um. Some concerns with.
The, the two City of Collins, is that just a delay getting information into you? Or, or are those like, no, we need to?
Make some changes?
City of Collins, um, they were, they do need to um, come forward with an amendment. To flip funding from one project, one element of the project to another one. I can't, I don't recall, that's the water, the wastewater project though.
Yeah.
Um, but I anticipate that one of those will be closing out soon, so. I've heard that the City of Huxley will be bringing in a claim here relatively soon. Um, we just got another claim submitted today for the primary healthcare. So they're probably right on target with that claim. Um, and Boys and Girls Club as well. Um, Access, which is number twenty-two, they anticipated doing a very, um, they've not done any claims. They anticipate a very large one in December, January, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is essentially almost fifty percent, forty percent of their. Their awarded funds, we've not seen that yet. Um, I have a meeting with them, well, they'll be here next week for their ARPA annual review with you, but I'm also doing my onsite site visit. And a couple, in middle of February, I'm looking at Bryce, he knows my calendar.
Um, so concerns me a little bit when we hear there's, they're not planning to draw down anything till December or January. Given that we're going to, if we're going to reallocate monies.
Last year.
Last year.
Last, in the reports they submitted, they anticipated December, yeah.
Okay, I thought you were saying that they're going to wait till this December, and I thought, wait a second, we're going to have to move sooner than that.
I would have had that conversation with them.
Okay, thank you.
What questions do you have? And how is this, does this, is this in a format that now that we've had a discussion, you understand some of the categories and information that. Will be helpful, or is there something else you're looking for?
It is helpful, it got a little confusing for me, and you kind of addressed versus completed less than fifty percent, and then trying to figure out, looking at the. Actual versus projected, um, but your explanation certainly helped that for me.
I might add a footnote, so the public knows that too, I'd already put down the agenda and everything by the time I. Realized that was clear to me, but not necessarily anyone else.
To make it easier to see if in a few weeks or a few months, people are making, their agencies are making progress. Would it be possible to add another column? So like in your percentage of total funding, actual, you could say as of January thirtieth, as of February fourteenth. As of February, whatever, makes your, makes your spreadsheet longer, but we could see, oh. Last time they only had zero percent, now they're up to twenty, for example, I mean, we can go back and compare this sheet to the next sheet, but that's. A tricky thing.
Yes, we can do that, although I've built these that are building their formula percentages from related to all the other tables, so.
Well.
It may not be that way in two weeks.
The, the sheet itself on here, you put at the top, updated on January twenty-fourth, so I would assume when you. Provide it to us like next week, for example, it would say updated February eighth or.
Sure, that's not quite what I was asking.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Linda would just like it all one-on-one, yes, we can do it, I just am not going to have the time to go in and figure my Excel spreadsheets over the next two weeks. So it might be in February.
Okay, but maybe, maybe it's going a month or so to just have that, so, so we can see that there's progress being made by just looking at one report and not having to go back and pull previous reports.
So just a column for each reporting period?
Yes, the expend, under the expenditures, just adding another, a column for each time. Yeah.
Yes, we can do that.
Or if you want to.
Know what you're saying now.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah, I find it, I find this very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, it's a great report, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna help us make sure, because our goal here is not sending, you know. Utilizing all this money for Story County residents, and that's going to, this is going to help us make sure we do.
So I will be back in two weeks with the same report, with an updated report. Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne. Hey, moving on, we have no upcoming, or is there any upcoming agenda items, excuse me?
I do not have any.
Thank you, now it's time for public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda, the board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meeting law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comment, please come up to the podium or up to the table here, if you're online, please raise your hand on Zoom. Not seeing anyone, we will close public comment number two, liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements, Supervisor Merkin?
Oh, budget work sessions, budget work sessions. And maybe more budget work sessions, I think Friday I have an AEDC meeting to um, break that up. And next week. We have more budget work sessions.
Yep.
That's about it.
Yeah, Supervisor Basil.
Yeah, in addition to the budget work sessions, I have a boost meeting this evening, NEDC at seven tomorrow. Um, a meeting with um, ITC tomorrow afternoon on proposed transmission lines.
Um, yeah.
I have that on my calendar, too.
Thursday, I have an alternatives board meeting, and Friday I have um, my county outreach. Um, meeting with Greg Picklap in the morning, and then budget meetings. And I think. Budget work sessions Monday.
Sounds like me, I've got the same, all budget work sessions, I also have a meeting Monday afternoon after budget work sessions. On the workforce procurement that I've been working on, so that's it for me. Uh, next, it looks like we need a motion to go into closed session, that's closed session pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-one point five one. Subpara one C.
So moved.
Second, then moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's?
Aye.
We'll go into closed session, and we'll go in. We are back in open session, is there a motion to adjourn? Second, then moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's?
Aye.
We are adjourned.